This video is brought to you by Eagle Station. Eagle Station is located at the City of Patterson, 3507 Williams Street, Patterson, Georgia. To book your next event here, call 912-647-5776. From the Courtyard to the Richard Griffiths Brick Room to the Claire Echols Auditorium, the Art Gallery, Brattle Suite, Court Room, and everything in between, Eagle Station has everything you need to make your next event the best event. Eagle Station is located in what was the heart of Patterson High School. If you're looking to gain a little bit more knowledge on what Patterson High School once was, please visit the Memorabilia Room. This will give you any information you need to know about the school that was in operation from 1932 to 1981. Eagle Station also pays homage to our veterans with their Veterans Museum, with hours of operation being Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and every third Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Call to reserve your next event here at Eagle Station today. Good afternoon Patterson City residents. I'm going to take you through what Election Day will be like right here at the City of Patterson on November 4th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So what you'll do is you'll enter right here and you'll come to these double doors. You'll walk right inside and cast your vote for the individuals who are running for Seat 2 and Seat 4 of the Patterson City Council. Make sure that you arrive with your driver's license in hand because that is the only thing that you need to cast your vote. Now that you've entered through these doors, let me show you where you come next. You'll now go to the Claire Echols Auditorium and cast your vote where there will be several different areas for many people to vote at once. And you may be asking, why do I keep calling it Seat 2 and Seat 4? The Patterson election for City Councilman is a little different than that of Blackshear. We don't have enough residents for it to be separated by district, so we vote for seats. So that gives you just a little bit of background on that. Uh, we have those two seats that are running opposed. So you will have the choice of voting for several different candidates to uphold that seat. So now, let's sit down and talk with those candidates and see what they have to say about why you should vote for them and what their vision is for the City of Patterson. Tell me a little bit about why you think people should elect you.
I think I just bring a fresh perspective to the area. Yeah, I retired from Middle Georgia. And I had, yeah, I had experiences up there in a small town with changes and, you know, a town that needed, much needed growth. And, yeah, and I know what it's like to want to be heard and have ideas that, you know, seem like never, nobody ever sees or nobody ever hears. And, um, and then they never make the, you know, light of day. You know, never hear anything about them. So, you know, I just, I just feel like I could bring a, uh, yeah, just a new perspective, uh, you know, from, uh, where I grew up to, you know, where I used to live, where I used to work and see in different areas. You know, I just, I love this small town atmosphere. I love the small town of Georgia. You know, it's filled with a lot of great people. And, you know, I just, I enjoy being a part of that, you know. But, you know, I, I certainly don't claim to have all the answers, you know, know everything. But, you know, I'm always willing to listen, you're always willing to be transparent and, you know, always take responsibility for what I do or say. And, um, you know, Patterson's a great little place to live. You know, it's a great place to, you know, raise a family. And, you know, I just want to do everything I can do to be a part of that community and help this community.
Yes, sir. So it sounds like your kind of overarching theme or goal is to be a voice to the people, um, to allow others to be heard and seen and valued and know that it's just not going in one ear and out the other.
Correct, correct. And, you know, we, we all want to be heard, be seen, you know, and not everything can be done for every single individual. You know, you, you've got to, you know, do what's good for the collective good of everybody. And, you know, put politics aside, put everything else aside. You know, just what's good for the people. And that's, that's the way I've always been. So, you know, what's good for everybody. That's just, um, so who I am, so that's just me.
Yes, sir. And can you give me a little glimpse into your vision for the City of Patterson should you get elected?
When you, I love living in, in this small town. You know, it's a real tight knit community, you know, uh, you know, full of a lot of great people. Yeah, I think one thing we need to do is, you know, expand and build up the infrastructure in this town, you know, to allow for business growth, you know, while still preserving the small town values. You know, one of my biggest things is really, you know, revamping the, the youth recreation program. And, you know, we've got fields, you know, baseball fields and football fields that don't really, that look like they're being run down. And, you know, sports is a, is a great thing for, you know, youth to get into. It helps build them and helps grow their character. And, um, you know, being a big sports guy myself, you know, growing up, you know, I don't know where I'd be in life without sports. Yeah, other things would be, you know, maybe revitalizing some of the area of the town. You know, some things in the town, you know, some of the old buildings that, you know, either need to be fixed or repaired or painted or, you know, just spruce up the town a little bit, a little bit, you know, to make it, not that it don't feel like home, but to make it, you know, pleasing to the eye from when people drive through our town. So, you know, well, you know, looks, looks of the aesthetics. You know, looks sometimes, you know, turn people away or really make people go, you know, wow, it's, it's a cute little town, just a, you know, quaint looking little town. So, and, and I think we can do some of that, you know, minimally and, and not cost a lot of money to anybody. So, um, yeah, maybe, uh, you know, just revitalize it a little bit. You try to, you know, encourage growth with maybe small businesses, you know, local eating places, you know, we've got a lot of good little places to eat. But, you know, people always want more and
Variety.
In different variety, correct? So.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that I, you know, grasped from speaking with so many different people who had graduated from Patterson High School and were Eagles, um, is the strong sense of pride that comes from having gone to school in this very building and having been an Eagle. So talking about, um, the rec department and Eagle Field and that aspect, I think that bringing some of that back and giving today's youth an opportunity to be invested in being an Eagle themselves would bring in so much community involvement because people have so much pride in their green and white. I mean, truly, beyond what I ever comprehended, um, you know, you always hear the phrase Patterson Proud. I never really understood the magnitude of it until I spoke with so many of those people who had graduated to high school prior to 1981. But, um, it was the investment that a lot of people have made into this town goes beyond what I ever realized. And I think that doing that would restore a sense of that pride because we've got Patterson Elementary School, but outside of that, you know, they don't have elementary level sports. So you have to have a rec department to be able to support that. So I think that would be really awesome.
Well, and whether it's working with the county or, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of what the city can do, you know. But, you know, we've got fields, you know, uh, you, you see a lot of signs, you know, people dedicated to those fields, you know, or the fields dedicated to them, I should say. And, you know, uh, you know, we, to me, we ought to bring that back. I remember riding through Patterson, uh, on my way to either state, you know, back to Statesboro or, uh, on my way back to Middle Georgia. Because, you know, I used to come through this way. And, you know, I used to see the youth out there playing on Fridays and Saturdays. And, you know, it was just, it did my heart good to see kids play in sports. And now you don't hardly ever see it. And, uh, I mean, I know the, the fields and fences and bleachers need a little work, but, you know, that's minimum compared to what the impact it could have on the youth in our community. So.
Yes, sir. Was there anything else that you have that you wanted to share specifically about yourself or, um, anything that you want people to know?
Yeah, I've always been, as far as my personality, I've always been a loyal, just trustworthy, you know, person that always believed in integrity and doing the right thing and using common sense. And, you know, so many times I think that, you know, gets lost in, in our world today. And, um, and that's just, that's just the framework of who I am. And, you know, I don't, I would be the stranger, I'll talk to anybody and I'll listen to anybody. And, you know, as, you know, part of my background was, you know, I was in management for many, many, many years. And, you know, when you're in management, you're always, you're hearing good stories, bad stories, but always have to listen. And then you make a determination based off of, you know, what I felt was the, the best way to handle this situation. And, um, you know, I, I would think city government would be the same basic principles. You know, just doing what's right for everybody. You know, you're not going to please everybody every time, but, you know, just try to do what's right for the collective good. And, you know, go from there. And just, you know, if you tell somebody you're going to do something, do your best to do it. If, if you tell them, you know, hey, I'll, I'll call you back, call them back, you know, you know, just simple stuff that means a lot to people, you know, it shouldn't go unnoticed just because you're on the City Council or on the, you know, county commissioners or, you know, or whether you're a judge or a sheriff or whatever position you take in this, you know, you don't be willing to listen to the people. And if you can't do something, you let them know you can't do it and let them know why. And, you know, don't mean we can't do it ever, it just means right now, you know, we may not be able to do it. Maybe something that's down the road we can do, but we just have to figure that out.
Yes, sir. Transparency.
Yes, very, you know, transparency is very good. I mean, it's, it'll keep you out of trouble.
Yes, sir. Well, I think that you shared some great points and some things about yourself that people will be, um, delighted to listen to and know and getting to know you so that they can make an informed decision about who they're going to vote for. So I thank you for taking the time to come up here and sit down and chat with me for just a little bit. And, um, I guess we'll know a little bit more on November 4th.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know. It won't be long now. And I appreciate you having me. I appreciate you doing this. And, uh, thank you for doing this and taking your time to do it for, for all of us.
You'll tell me which seat you are running for, for, okay. Yes, ma'am. So tell me a little bit about, um, why you feel people should elect you for Seat 4?
Well, I'm running for council because of what was and what can be. That's my biggest statement, you know. My roots are here. My family is deeply rooted here in Patterson. Um, and I think that we need to bring back that community feel again. When you hear people talk about Patterson, you hear them talk about, uh, the downtown area, when it was alive, where families would meet, you know, I hear my mom talk about that. Um, the parks, when kids would go out and swim and play tennis. I remember my cousin, him used to come over here to the gymnasium to play basketball, you know. So, uh, it's trying to figure out a way to bring back that small town energy and feel, you know, for this people of Patterson.
Yes, ma'am. And I've heard stories about the old Patterson Pole. Um, I was at a laugh whenever it was still in, um, service. But, I mean, my mother and all of her cousins, they have many stories from days being at the Patterson Pole and, um, playing the Eagles in the rec department, the Blackshear Tigers playing the Eagles and, um, that sort of thing. So I do think that
And let's not forget the 4th of July. Oh, wow. Listen, that's all you heard people talk about. Patterson was the place to be for the 4th of July. People would come from near and far just to see the fireworks. You know, we need to bring back that small town energy and feel for the City of Patterson.
Yes, ma'am. So do you have a specific vision for how, you know, if you are elected, how you plan to like carry out some of those things?
Um, I think working with the other council members and the mayor to come up with a clear plan to move the city forward, you know, and truly listening at what, what it is that the people are saying, and what it is that they're envisioning for the City of Patterson. So the plan is to sit down, see if we can come up with a clear concise plan on how to move the city forward first. You know, we have to look at different projects, different funding, but we can't do anything until we come up with a plan to do it. But that comes from listening to the people, you know.
So is there anything else that you feel is important that you want people to know about, you know, who you are as an individual or, you know, what makes you feel so passionately about this seat and being on the City Council or anything like that?
Um, when people ask me, uh, you know, why should we vote for you? I, I got that question in the past. I tell them, I think you should vote for what you believe in. Vote for what you see and how you see your city moving forward. You know, you have to decide what you want for your city. You know what I'm saying? So I think you should vote for that. When I ran before, I probably knocked on just about every door in Patterson. You know, uh, it took me nearly two weeks. I went to every neighborhood. I sat in houses with some of the seniors, had lunch, and just listened at what it is that they envision. Uh, a lot of them talked about what was again. You know, that's why I said my slogan is what was and what can be. Because that's all they talked about. So, um, just hearing them out, listening and a lot of them telling me that I made them very comfortable because no one has ever stopped and actually sat and talked, like they don't see council members, like they've never had that. So that made me feel like, it, it showed me how special Patterson is, you know, and the people in Patterson. And all they're asking for is someone to represent them and to hear them, to listen, to understand them. They're not asking for much, honestly. They just want to see their town thrive, you know. And I tell people, you got to think about what you want for your children, your grandchildren. You know, how do you see the future of Patterson? So.
And what are we doing about it right now so that there is a brighter in the future?
Well, we want to get people out to vote. We need people to get out and vote and, and not just that part, but you got to listen at the major concerns. You know, I have people come to me and, um, asking me, you know, you heard anything about the water bill? They're asking the city, you know, why is the water going up again? And no one's giving them a clear answer. They don't understand. So we have to be accountable for, uh, what's going on. So people, people want honesty, accountability from our leaders. And I think we need to do that and give them that, you know. And even with the roads, it should not take a tragedy for us to go and fix a road, put up speed bumps. Let, people know what they need in their neighborhoods. They know what they need in their neighborhoods. And all you have to do is listen. We can't continue to ignore what it is that they're asking for because things happen. Then we don't, we don't need a reactive government. Let's be proactive. Hey, if they're saying this going on, let's figure out what's going on. Let's see what we can do before tragedy strikes. And we don't want that anymore, you know. So we definitely have to get out and listen at our voters.
Yes, ma'am. Was there anything else that you wanted to share?
Get out and vote.
So you will have the opportunity to vote here at the City of Patterson from 7 to 7 for Ms. Raquel on November the 4th.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Jim, just tell me a little bit about why you think you should be elected or reelected?
Reelected? Because the things we have accomplished since I've been here have been positive and been going forward. You know, it's like, you know, we have 500 jobs within three miles of the red line. We've got more new houses being built right now today than probably ever in Patterson. Those are all positive signs and I want to keep that going.
Yes, sir. So do you have any, um, thing to share with me about your vision for the city if you are reelected?
Well, like I said, I want to keep things moving forward. When I'm running for reelection for the City of Patterson Councilman, for the past years while I've served on the council, lots of good things have happened for the City of Patterson. We have improved traffic flow on Tarbidge Road and have taken steps to slow the traffic and improve its safety. We have finished two more rooms in Eagle Station, created a historical museum, Patterson High School Memorabilia Room, Drawery Room and Brattle Room. We have new locally owned businesses. We are building state of the art tennis courts for our community to play tennis and pickleball. We are currently upgrading the lights at the football field, which will improve its use. We have obtained ownership with the State Forestry Building and property, which improves storage and freeing up office spaces in those facilities. We have improved our fire department with more volunteer firemen, a new engine and equipment with a code to make the community safe. We have upgraded all of our police vehicles. We have upgraded all our city equipment. We are installing two new lift stations. We have accomplished all this without debt.
And you, that has been accomplished without increasing any of the debt, right?
Right.
Okay. Yes, sir.
But there's still things to improve and I would like to be here, be a part of that.
Yes, sir. Cause you've already been a part of so many great wonderful things. And I'm sure, you know, there are things that are in the works that, um, you want to see come to fruition by being reelected.
Definitely.
That's what I'm thinking. Yes, sir. And there are so many things that you've listed and talked about that, you know, I honestly didn't know had been known. I mean, unless you have a direct connection to the fire department or, um, you've needed their help or you've gone into the facility, you may not know that. Now, I didn't know that the police officers have gotten some new vehicles, obviously, because I've seen them, thankfully, they haven't pulled me over. And that isn't why I've seen them, but, um, those kinds of things I think are great. And even, so the goal from me sitting down and talking with y'all is for the people around my age demographic that don't read the newspaper, that, you know, the way that we consume our content is through digital. So that way, you know, people can make an informed decision that are, you know, my age and in Patterson that don't read the paper. They know what you stand for, the things that you've accomplished and who they are voting for. Because if they, we don't take the time to get to know you or have a conversation or, um, you're just kind of going in and picking.
Right.
And I don't think that's right. So I'm hoping that three of these people do listen and they do watch and they make a decision based off of the person that they think best aligns with the job.
Well, I don't have any personal agendas. My agenda is simply to make this town better. That's it. That's my goal.
Yes, sir. And you are a longtime resident
Yes, I am.
Of Pierce, or Patterson.
68 years.
Yes, sir. So born and raised right here. All right. So, and I think that, um, is a lot to write home about too because you obviously have a deep connection to the city itself because this is the, the city that you've lived in your entire life.
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir. And then the lights at the football field, I didn't know about that either. So that is really awesome. Um, and so is there any goal to kind of, um, revamp the recreation department in Patterson?
We, like I said, we're building new tennis courts. And yes, I mean, there is an effort. We're going to do some work out, out there on the buildings to make them up to date. And that's pretty much it on the rec.
Yes, sir. I just think it would be awesome to see people with Eagles on once again, you know, playing football at Eagle Field and, um, playing baseball and tennis and allowing there to be a growing recreation department for the youth of Patterson.
Right.
Because a lot of those kids, you know, to play rec sports, they have to go to Blackshear.
Right.
So that would be really, really awesome to be able to host those games here and generate that much more revenue for the city.
That's true.
Well, y'all will be able to vote for Mr. Jim on November the 4th here at the City of Patterson from 7 to 7. Tell me which seat you are running for. Is it 2 or 4?
2.
2. All right. So you are running for reelection of that seat.
I'm running for reelection.
All right. So tell me why people should vote for you to be reelected?
First of all, I was raised in Patterson, Georgia. I love Patterson. I've gone for Patterson for 30 years. And my mother got sick in 2004 and I moved back to take care of her. And, um, had a house in the country. But my wife and my children, they love Patterson. And I fell in love with it all over again. Some of the finest people that you will ever meet from Patterson, Georgia. We got a lot of leaders. We got people that will do anything for you. And I want to serve these people and make sure they get a fair shake. I'm honest and I want to really look at them. That's, that's why I think, that's why I want to run again. That's why I'm serving.
Yes, sir.
And another thing, if you love Jesus Christ, the best way to serve Him is show you gratitude by helping and serving other people.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's, that's it for me.
One of the most admirable things people can have is to serve its heart. So having that and using it in this role and position shows that you truly want to spread the love of Jesus Christ and show it by serving those of Patterson. So I can't think of many things more admirable than that.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
So your vision for the city, you want to tell us a little bit about, you know, the things that you accomplished in your previous term and things that you want to accomplish in your hopeful upcoming term?
Well, some of the, some of the things that we've gotten accomplished right now, with this tennis court.
And you have a special connection to that tennis court, right?
Yep. Lee Johnson and I built the first tennis court. And that was back when we was in high school. We've getting new lights at the football field. We've put new signs on every entrance in the town. And they, they're, uh, they are beautiful signs. That shows you we, we've got pride in the city. This Eagle Station right here, that's something else. I feel like I'm a part of, had, had something to do with it a little bit. It's just amazing what we've thrown away in this county. When you can come around here and look and see what we've taken care of and restored, how beautiful it is. Now, my vision for Patterson, Georgia, I want us to be the first. Here's my vision. I got this the other day. I saw where Florida with the 2026 ballot, no more taxes on property. It's going to be on the ballot. Why can't we do that here? I'm asking all of you to vote for me. And if you don't vote for me, please get in touch with Steve Meeks and tell him we are tired of paying taxes. We want it put on the ballot where we can vote. Now, I know what you're thinking. You want to know where the money's coming from. I've done my research. When President Trump inauguration in 2017, January 21st, 12 o'clock, he was standing up there and he says, "I'm here to give the power back to the people." He had the military standing behind him. I didn't know what that meant. But right now, what's going on in Washington DC, he's shrinking the federal government. He's going to have it shrunk to 20%. He's doing away with the three letter agencies. All right, what's that mean? We're going to have to, that money is going to be coming back to the states. Okay, Google and see how much. Let me show you some.
All right.
Tariffs. This is how we will be able to deal with, with property tax. Okay, it's last year in 2024, 77 being Okay, it's last year in twenty twenty-four, seventy-seven billion. This year, as of August, a hundred and sixty-five billion in tariffs. He says that money's coming back to the people. It's coming back to the states. We can do, that's what, we, we can do away with property tax. Property tax is not fair. Every year, our property gets reupraised or every other year, and then our insurance goes up. And we don't own our land. We rent. It's time for us to take a stand and pick. We can get this little fire started right here in Patterson, Georgia, and it can spread all over the state. And maybe our governor, it'll fall on his ears, we want it on the ballot where people have a chance to vote. But the money is going to be available. That's my vision.
All right. Yes, sir. Well, it sounds like you've done a lot of research and you came very well prepared. So has this been something that you've been learning about for quite some time now?
I've been studying it. Does it, you know, how long it would take to count? Five billion dollars? That's half a trillion.
Pretty long time.
It would take fifteen light years if you said one, two, three. Well, think about that one, uh, a hundred and sixty-five, let's see, make sure I got it right. A hundred and sixty-five billion that's came in this year. That's big money.
Yes, sir.
And the states that have gone by and upheld the constitution, they want to get the money. The money's coming, coming back. But I, the first step, let's vote, no more property tax. That's my vision.
All right. Yes, sir. Well, do you have anything else that you want to share with, um, the people of Patterson? Anything that you feel like is important for them to know about you or, um?
No, I don't.
All right.
I think I, I think, uh, y'all know that I love you and I want you to vote for me. And, uh, if you need me, I, I'm the old man that rides around in the side by side. While y'all at work, I'm looking after your property. Because when everybody goes to work, there's, there's nobody that can tell me, us retired people.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, I'm looking after you and thank you for your vote.
And so you will have the opportunity to vote for Mr. David on November fourth here at the city of Patterson from seven to seven. He looks forward to seeing you cast your ballot.
And if you need me, just call me.
Okay, Eagles, now it's your turn. You've heard from many of your candidates and now you can make an informed decision. If this is your first election, don't be intimidated. You should exercise your right to vote. So come right here to the city of Patterson and cast your vote for the candidate that you think is best fit for the job. Ally Pigler, The Blackshear Times.